Okay. Oh, hi, Mr. Durkin and Mr. Kent. It's nice to meet you. My name is Nia Omer and I'm part of Scott Scoop Journalism. So I had some questions for you today. First of all, I want to thank the Clock Tower Music Manager for letting us use his store to host this. And I hope you guys are having a great day as well. So just to start, maybe you could both tell me a little bit about your goals and some of the important changes you want to bring to the community of San Carlos?
Alex, go first.
Sure, okay, thanks, thanks, John. Well, so I mean, in terms of my background, so you know, I've, I've worked as a commercial real estate consultant since 2005. So because of bulk of what the city council does, it's really urban planning, you know, thinking about the commercial real estate, the residential development, the retailers and restaurants, et cetera. You know, I believe that I have the strongest experience in that. I've worked with, not only has my family owned and operated restaurants for decades, but I've worked with restaurants, everyone from sort of Taco Bell and Burger Room to multi-michelin star chefs, et cetera. And so for me, first and foremost, I think that the city council really needs to have a, a city council person needs to serve as a fiduciary for the best interest of the residents, first and foremost. I think that the existing city council desperately needs an independent devil's advocate role, a person that's experienced in urban planning, commercial, commercial and residential development and real estate, along with financial analysis, contract analysis and negotiation, to represent the best interest of San Carlos residents. So I'll let John take over.
Okay. Hi, I'm John Durkin. I'm running as a community volunteer in San Carlos and slash retail associate. So active in San Carlos community, did the Hometown Days Parade and the Carmont Cheer and the Carmont Drumline were both in there. So thank you for that participation. So just, I think the Hometown Days is a good example of what I would bring to the city council. And none of the events that I've organized have a playbook of success. You just have to wing it as you go along until the final day. So as Hometown Days approached and planning it, different groups wanted to come in and all of that. So work to collaborate, to address everyone's interest in participating and everyone watching the parade along the route. So I'm a good collaborator, a listener, willing to try something, see if it works. If it doesn't work, you know, no harm done, no foul. But be a listener, there's a lot of stakeholders in San Carlos and I want to be their ears, have their ears, and then it's early 9:00 AM. And then listen to the stakeholders and then take their feedback back to the certain department of San Carlos City Hall and then make sure that they're being heard. So John Durkin for San Carlos City Council.
Yeah, and then could you guys maybe elaborate a little bit on like the, what ties? And then how your experiences, you kind of went briefly over, how they both like affect like community members and developers regarding the response to the East San Carlos Housing Plan?
Yes, so I guess we'll just go back and forth if that makes sense in that sort of way. So yeah, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I've worked in commercial real estate since 2005. And I think it really, I'm not necessarily pro-development. I think it's really important to find the right balance between, you know, I do support affordable housing for police, fire, teachers and city staff. You know, ideally on the land owned by the city or a school, you want to keep them close. Especially when it's been an emergency, you know, you want police and fire in town. You know, transferring development, development of new housing and, you know, makes use by the Caltrain is really nothing new. We've been talking about it in the industry for 20 years and you could see by Caltrain, we've delivered about 600 new units, housing units in the last eight-year cycle, including Wheeler and Caltrain. And so my concern is that the existing city council has gone way overboard in terms of approving, you know, five times more housing in this next eight-year cycle. 3,216, you know, buffer above the 2,735 that, that the, basically the state government has so-called mandated. So I think it's important for people to know that a lot of these issues are really kind of legal issues, policy issues. So the word choice really matters. So I think it's very misleading for the state of California to call it a mandate because it's not really a mandate. Now, you know, there are no penalties for us to question as a community and presumably the city council should be able to question Sacramento in the same way that Sacramento politicians sometimes question the federal government, right? And, and so there's no cost or penalty to question. Secondly, you know, while there might, there could be a penalty if, if we don't have an approved, approved housing element, but the housing element is actually just a wish list because, you know, a vast majority of all the land parcels that we would build the, you know, five times more housing on are actually privately owned. They're not on the market for sale, so there's no guarantee that they will sell. And while, while the city council, the city recently tried to, they eminent domained a retired firefighter's medical office building on Cherry Street. They eminent domained it, they seized it and to build a relatively small number of affordable units. And you know, eminent domain is supposed to be reserved for building streets and things like that. And I felt like that was, I had actually talked to that gentleman about it. He, he felt really jerked around by the city because at, at the essence of eminent domain is due process and also fair compensation. And so in, in terms of due process, they really dragged out the, the legal review for a long time. And then they, they took over his building, they seized, seized his building and did not let him even rent it out. So I mean, I, I felt like that was very unfair and that's not the way to do it. I don't think that the city needs to act like the king or to ignore laws such as that. So.
Wow, again, it's nine in the morning. So I, as a member of the city council, I would totally be new to working with developers in that. But having lived here for 21 years, I'm aware of the growth of San Carlos. I've seen it for 21 years. I've questioned some things that have happened, but then as time went on, I can appreciate the change that did happen. I, I do agree that Sacramento, in total, it's 2.5 million houses they want to build in California as a total by 2030, which is an ambitious goal. Also in 2035, they also want to get rid of gas-powered vehicles. So Sacramento has ambitious goals for its residents. But I'd love to hear locally from our representatives in, in Sacramento. Where the Josh Beckers, the Kevin Mullins, what do they think about San Carlos and the peninsula that they represent? The 2,700 houses that they want to build from Sacramento? We're not a cookie cutter state. Each city is different and each city is unique. So you know, yes, San Carlos needs to build new houses for, for people, residents and people that work here or want to work on the peninsula. But we also need to have amenities, park amenities, tennis courts, swimming pools, pickleball. Where, where is that in, in the equation coming from Sacramento?
And if I could just piggyback to what John's saying, because he's making some good points. You know, if, if we're trying to find the right balance for everyone that lives and works here, you know, you have to think about, John was just pointing out the need for parks, right? So some of these radical housing laws of Sacramento that, that think that the goal of the world is to maximize housing, they're actually proposing to, I, I've heard from Ben Fuller, the former president of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, that they're even talking about maybe building apartment buildings on L'Oreal Park. So you know, I, I don't think that we should give up our parks for some radical housing agenda. I think that's way overblown. And also, if you really dig into the details of some of these laws, for example, AB 2097 that Gavin Newsom just approved in the last year, it said, it says that it actually forbids the city of San Carlos from requiring any parking in any new development, whether it be residential or commercial, if it's within half a mile of public transit. And now, when I, when we say public transit, again, the, the word choice matters and it has implications. Public transit meaning any bus stop. You got a bus stop a half a mile away and all of a sudden a huge office building doesn't have to have a single parking space? I mean, with my experience in commercial real estate, in fact, when I was representing Taco Bell and their Cantina version in Berkeley, we, I, I did the site selection and lease negotiation for Taco Bell and it was in the base of a brand-new apartment building that was intended for students. So I mean, I guess there's a, a time and a place where you can have a building that has no parking such as that. But that was a block away from campus. And you know, and really even with no parking, you know, if you're trying to run a restaurant, you need at least one spot, you know, per, per restaurant. You're going to be delivering the raw materials, you know, in and out and you got it, you know, it just like, I feel like the people in Sacramento are just totally ignoring us as residents and us as business owners and kind of in their own reality.
Yeah, and then I feel like, you know, you guys have like some similarities, some differences in your perspectives. And I think, you know, these differences would help bring better change to the community as well.
Yeah.
How would you say, maybe, Mr. Durkin, you could start this time, on, what would you say? How would you see your perspectives differ from the other candidates or are similar to them?
I, I think, so there's five of us running for the three open positions. I think we're all thoughtful and like the city of San Carlos, we each are different. You know, our, our history in work, our history in family, our history in San Carlos, it's each different. So, and then we're going to be working with members of the city council and city staff. So I think we're actually all similar in that we're thoughtful and caring. We each have all stepped up to run for city council. So I, I think our similarities are there. It's just, I think, topic by topic, we each are going to look at that topic and not jump ahead to a future topic. You know, it's, it's, what happens in city council is, is unique, one item on the agenda at a time. And thoughtful is who, who I am and that's who I would be on city council.
Yeah, well, John is my favorite competitor that's, so I hope that we both get elected. I told him that previously. No, I, I think it's really important that the role of the city council folks, and especially in election, it, it, an election is, is an essential moment and sort of a local check and balance in our government. And so the city, you, you should not elect a city council person that is just going to pretend that everything is perfect. You know, the city has a lot of major challenges that the city council doesn't really talk about. It's like they're trying to hide, you know, the, the real issues. But, but I think it's really important because, you know, each of us sign, or I think, I, I signed this ethics agreement that is standard across all the city council races and other races in California. And I think it's important that the public understand the, the nature of what we're doing. You know, and I just want to read a few quotes here that, you know, that we've agreed. It says, "I shall conduct my campaign openly and publicly, discussing the issues as I see them and presenting my record and policies with sincerity and fairness and criticizing without fear or favor the record and policies of my opponents or political parties that merit this criticism." So I think it's really important that, you know, that is the nature of the, of our pursuit, that we've all agreed to specifically criticize without fear or favor the record and policies of our opponents. So I mean, some people might think that I'm, you know, it's, it's not nice for me to, to, to cross-examine my opponents, but it's really essential to cross-examine and that's, that's most certainly part of the ethics statement. I think, you know, in terms of the specific differences, I actually find that I agree with John Durkin and a lot of his thoughts. And I do, I do appreciate his joie de vivre for sure, as he was, you know, he was endorsed by the Semitiano Daily Journal and so on. I think that's wonderful. I think in terms of differences, I, you know, I think that I'm the only candidate that has, you know, a graduate, graduate degree in finance. I went to Northwestern undergrad and also Northwestern Kellogg School of Management for MBA in finance and marketing. I think I have by far the most experience in urban planning and commercial real estate. However, I definitely would not be a pro-development. I would be, serve as a fiduciary to, to the residents. I think other differences, I mean, it's important to, to look behind the curtain. When, when someone gets endorsed by a certain group, what does that really mean? I mean, I, I think frankly, our competitors, Sarah McDowell and Pranita Vikatesh, they're endorsed by a YMB, Yes in My Backyard, sort of in my opinion, a radical group that on first glance, it seems like it's, it's compassionate. But what it really does is it supports that, that AB 2097 that we were talking about. It, it would support, you know, developers to build a big place without any parks, see? So, so you know, to, to imagine that maximum housing is a noble goal is, is really false. Because maximum, if you support maximum housing, like this peninsula for everyone YMB group that Pranita and Sarah are endorsed by, that means no parks in that development. So I mean, and, and no housing and, and when you don't have, I'm sorry, and, and no parking. And when you don't have parking as a part of a major apartment building or a major retail or a major office building, then people, it, it creates problems in traffic. It, it creates problems, people try to all park on the side streets, but then, then, then that gets in the way of the bicycle lanes, right? So you, I think, I'm, I'm primarily running for safer streets, you know, less crime, safer pathways to work in school for pedestrians and bicyclists, and also better mental health services and also to preserve the charm and the right balance of San Carlos. So I think if you, if you vote for Pranita or Sarah, unfortunately, they are endorsed by the group that wants to just radically maximize the housing without any care for other factors. And not to mention schools. I mean, if, if you bring in thousands of new residents to San Carlos, what's it going to look like at Carmont? What's it going to look like at Ralston and Central and other places? It's going to be overwhelmed. And as someone, one of my niches in real estate has been actually working with public and private schools all around the Bay Area. Some people may notice that I had that listing, a lease or sell, the church right across from Carmont and Alameda, Elspogos. And our focus was to, you know, examine the options for that church with a focus on our new preschool and also to help that, that Christian church to achieve, to achieve their Christian mission. And it got unfortunately, unfortunately frozen in the pandemic. But anyway, so John, it's your turn.
I just want to add, so this, this conversation's directed, is focused on housing. So the, the planning commission looks at all the housing projects before they get sent to the city council for approval. So accountability, I think, is a big part of the city council. And we, the city council appoints the members of the planning commission. So I, I hope that everyone who currently is on the city council and has appointed to members on the planning commission, that they're watching over them, that, that the decisions they're making now about projects are what they had in mind when they appointed them first to the planning project, the planning commission. And so right, so, so my first appointment to the planning commission, I don't know who's on it. I don't know what the expiration dates of their term is. But I, I really watch my person that I would appoint to the planning commission and make sure that they are, you know, incorporating John Durkin thoughts, but their own thoughts also and stakeholders also. And then the other thing, I know Alex says about the Yes in My Backyard. And San Carlos is actually filled with, not filled, but there's members of Yes in My Backyard and No in My Backyard. And each, each group has stakeholders. So what's the best way to bring those two groups together to come up with a compromise for housing that actually works for San Carlos?
So yeah, you, I mean, you guys have brought definitely good points. And there is really, I would say, no right answer in this because there's benefits and, you know, repercussions to both. There's benefits of housing and adding those opportunities for people, but there's still some repercussions as Mr. Kent, you brought up as well, that have yet to be discussed in a deeper level or completely solved yet. So then, how would you say your perspectives could help change or further the way city council, the city, the community, your developers see the East San Carlos Housing Development Plan? How would you guys bring your own perspectives to solve these greater issues?
You can go first if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, the, the east side is actually three different areas. You have industrial arts, you have the east side, south of Holly, and then you have the east side, north of Holly. So there's three areas over there when we talk east side. So I do have a, a background in operations and I love a checklist. And for the planning department, I would encourage them to bring the, the stakeholders from the three groups. And maybe it's the stakeholders from industrial arts. It's the stakeholders from south of Holly and then north of Holly. Maybe there's a continuum of all three of them. But put together a checklist of what these stakeholders want to see in a, at their interest in a project. And as the, the planning department goes through the, the plans that are submitted from the developer, look at those checklists, are we incorporating those ideas in it? I think you, within operations, the first time something goes awry, it just keeps going awry. So if you can, if you can find that first fault and correct it, it's going to be better in the long run.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and just to sort of add to what John was talking about, you know, I think that as a city council person has a few roles. You know, not just to be diplomatic and rosy about everything, but also to, to listen and then to be ready to reflect what you're hearing from the community back to city council and city staff and also out to the greater residents and, and community. Because a lot of people are just busy with their own lives. They're, 99% of the people in San Carlos don't watch the city council meetings. So I, I do, along with that spirit, I want to point out, and I've shared this document that I've posted on Nextdoor with Ms. Omer and her journalistic team to just create some awareness of like, what are, what are the leaders and what are the residents of Greater East San Carlos really thinking about? And you can see that on Nextdoor, but for example, Paul Mazzinetti, who's, I believe, the, the current president, he said, "These density bonuses, a lack of minimum parking are real wild cards, wildly out of character with the community. The community is very concerned." And I think also when we had that recent candidate forum over at L'Oreal Park, he, he also said that we believe that the existing city council has gone way overboard with their approval of new development. Further, the former president of the GESE, Ben Fuller, was, was also, you know, on, on that Nextdoor post I had. And he said that, you know, Al, Al, the head of community development and Jeff Maltby, the city manager, worked with us 10 years ago to hammer out a compromise in East San Carlos that we weren't happy with, but we agreed to leave, live with it. It feels like the city now might be going for broke. Let's review the past flights of the GESE. Now you're considering L'Oreal Park for apartments. So I mean, again, you know, Ben Fuller was the past president. Paul Mazzinetti is the current president of that area. So I mean, I think that those community leaders are reflecting, a, a lot of them have lived there for 10, 20, 30 years. And I encourage you guys to look at the other quotes that I pulled out of. It basically was one of the city council meetings that reviewed the, the housing element. And several of the members of that neighborhood were there to, to really voice their, their two-minute protest at the existing city council and city for, for approving so much overdevelopment of our town.
Yeah, and then just kind of a follow-up. I wanted to ask you both like kind of individual questions on what you guys had like said prior.
Yeah.
We'll start with Mr. Durkin. How would you say that being a retail associate and Parks, Recreation, Culture Commissioner, as well as your 20-plus years of residence in the city of San Carlos, inform your perspective on the housing issue?
Well, I actually don't think they're related. But I think the one that is, is central to the question is living here in San Carlos.
Yes, probably.
And probably, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but actually on, on the Parks and Rec and Culture Commission, you, you get the chance, it's, it's a meeting run very similar to the city council. Doesn't have the full agenda that they do on the city council. But it does, the, the one thing that I recommend to everybody in San Carlos is take advantage of the two-minute public comment. If, if, if city council and representatives on commissions don't hear from you, we don't know the, we, we know the topic, but we officially don't know the topic. So we, we can't discuss it unless it comes up in a commission meeting or a council meeting. So, so, so that's, that's my experience that I bring to the housing. Please stakeholders, be heard, speak up, let us hear from you. And, and also to, to projects that happen, and my thoughts are everywhere, but, but to projects that happen in San Carlos. So it starts at the planning commission. They're going to look at, at the project, the project that comes before that. Then there's the first shovel that goes in the ground. That's not where the conversation and the discussion, the oversight ends. We need to watch it until the end. There's a project down here, it was housing, a diagonal from behind the library. Eight years it went on. And where's the repercussions to that? When did city hall say, developer, we're going to start charging you? You, you made a plan with the city that we approved and then you lost focus of where you were going with this. And now San Carlos residents are impacted. People driving to Laurel Street, driving to work, just the life of the residents that lived around there was impacted. So, so, so again, speak up and then San Carlos City Hall and Planning Department and City Hall, keep a focus on it. Let's, let's be accountable to what we approved from start to finish. And then even afterwards, what, what did the developer offer? Did he say, "I'll plant 100 trees"? Well, do we have 100 trees? Let's have a follow-up checklist.
Yeah, and, and to piggyback on what John's saying, that, that's exactly what Ben Fuller was, was stating in that, in that one presentation to the city council, that they, their neighborhood had been promised a bunch of trees on the new railroad berm, I think it was. And, and you know, years and years ago, and every year they'd say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll get to you. We'll plant those trees" and they, they, they were never planted. So I mean, I, I think that to John's point, you have to, you know, hold people accountable for what they promised. And ideally really have a memorandum of understanding. And that's something that, I, I think the good news for Greater East San Carlos is that there is a new memorandum of, of understanding. And I actually forwarded that to Ms. Omer for her review. But you know, at first, and, and I think frankly, it was a little bit of a negotiating tactic by the city. But you know, at first they were saying, "Oh, you know, we're going to build 90-foot apartment buildings on East San Carlos Ave and close to the Caltrain Station." And that is, you know, radical and upsetting for those, for those residents. But the, the new memorandum of understanding does limit the height there to, to, I think, 35 feet. And also provides some, you know, extra setbacks and things like that. So, but, but again, I mean, it's, it's really important to know that we're steadily losing control of local control and review of our development and the way that we live and work here in San Carlos. In the last year, something like 40 new housing laws have been passed at the state level. And I have not heard a single protest from any of the existing city council folks, including Anna Marak and Sarah McDowell, that, whose terms are up and they hope to get re-elected now. They probably will. But, but they, they seem to be okay with all those radical laws out of Sacramento, like SB 9, SB 10. I've, I've heard lots of people at some of, some of the adjacent cities. In fact, the head of community development in an adjacent city just north of here, I, I was meeting with him and he was just enamored and how great it would be to have Soviet-style centralized planning out of Sacramento instead of the local review that we all enjoy today. So, you know, we've, I think, again, part of our role is to not only be a fiduciary, but really kind of a watchdog. You know, why are, why are the existing city council, you know, sweeping under the rug some of these issues? Other city issues that are important. We have $42 million in deferred maintenance on our sidewalks and streets. So if we want safer pathways to work in school, it's awfully hard when you have no sidewalk at all or it's crumbling. And so I've been trying to work with bicyclist advocate Sonia Elks to think about some specific places where we could add new staircases. That dirt, that really slippery, steep dirt path by St. Charles School and Parish that goes down from Alameda, Elspogos, down to the school and to Central School. You know, it's, it's already there. If we can have, we, we have a really hilly topography in a town, you can sort of cut to the chase literally by looking for places to add staircases, right? And that, that better encourages everyone to use, to, to walk instead of drive. And, and if you're on a narrow windy street in the hills, you know, it's super expensive to try to widen the, the streets in a en masse basis. So I think just doing those staircases down where possible could really help those goals of safer streets.
And then just kind of wrapping up now, I'll start with Mr. Kent this time. How do you believe that city council has the power to, to listen to the people and you know, take their, I don't want to say request, but their feedback? And how do you believe that city council has the power to instill these differences and changes based on what the people want?
Yeah, so I mean, one of the roles of city council is they are a legislative body, a local legislative body. And they do vote on many things, whether it be new proposed municipal codes, you know, the hiring or firing of a city manager, for example. Or they, they do vote on these new developments. And that's super important. And to John's point earlier, they're responsible to appoint all the commissioners. So yeah, I've, I've definitely applied for, to, to be a planning commissioner many times frankly, in San Carlos and other cities that we've lived in. And frankly, you know, I'm known to be, I'm a registered independent and I'm known to be more, you know, libertarian and moderate. And so that, I, I feel like, you know, one of the, one of the main ways that people get appointed by, as a, as a commissioner is if they're a big Democrat Party supporter. And there's nothing wrong with the Democrat Party, but you know, the entire community needs to be represented. So when 30% or 35% of all the residents here in San Carlos vote Republican So when 30% or 35% of all the residents here in San Carlos vote Republican, and yet there are no Republicans on the city council, that's a problem. What about the no-party preference independent folks and all the other many political parties that have no representation? So I think that that's why, at the heart of where we can improve as a city, we need to have better diversity of perspective on the city council. Diversity of perspective can come from a lot of different sources, whether it be, you know, diverse political perspective and values, or, you know, having diversity in terms of where you grew up, whether you grew up in a wealthy environment or a poor environment. Of course, different races, religions, et cetera, are all, I want to represent 100% of the residents. And I think I can uniquely do that better than the other community.
Mr. Durkin, Mr. Leopold, then what would you say? How do you believe that city council has the power to, you know, instill change based on what people want in representing the people?
Okay, to the last question, actually. We talk about Sacramento telling San Carlos, you know, encouraging San Carlos what to do with the housing. Why can't San Carlos be a representative of how it can be done better? You know, that other cities look to San Carlos as, wow, look what this great little town on the peninsula south of San Francisco it's done. So, you know, we know what they want, and we know better what San Carlos wants. So let's incorporate San Carlos interests before we take what Sacramento wants us to do. Incorporate the two, it works. But also, as a member of the city council, sure it's, hopefully, 16 days. I'm sure it's John Durkin sitting up there as one of the five members of the city council. But I'll never forget that I'm the voice of everybody in San Carlos. And so, but, you know, there's feedback that I'm hearing along the way, or I'm sure I'll be hearing along the way, and to incorporate those. One thing I've said to myself is, every city council topic that comes up to me, I will ask the staff who's presenting, "Is there a petition from the residents on this topic?" I've heard a few times that some petitions have been brought up with hundreds of signatures that have been ignored. So that would be something that concerns me. And I will ask at every council meeting again, "Is there a petition on this topic that we need to address for that?", that kind of thing. And then just with regard to housing, you know, when you build, you know, something high in the east, I will specific to that, you're taking away possibly someone else's sunshine. We all love sunshine, wherever we live, in California, around the world. And if there is a tall building that takes your sunshine, it really takes something from the person. And that should be the one thing that we ask developers and our neighbors and anyone building in San Carlos, "Are you really impacting someone else's sunshine?" So, I mean, it's.
Literally and figuratively.
Yeah, truly, yeah. But that's the important thing, you know. You know, people on the east side, they, like, the people, you know, east side, west side. I mean, we shouldn't have a J. Wright Football Area in San Carlos, you know. We're all San Carlos 94070. And so everyone here has either bought a home or renting, but we call this place home. So what can we do as city council to make sure everybody is happy in their home in 94070? John Durkin, San Carlos City Council.
Yeah, and then just, you know, I think last question to wrap this all up. You both have kind of talked at different moments about this. But just as a closing, we'll start with Mr. Kent this time. How do you plan to make sure community members, both for and against the new housing development and the developers are able to give feedback and communicate with each other so that the city can reach a compromise?
Okay, well, I think that, you know, there's a little bit too much of a vacuum or echo chamber in the city council chambers. You know, it's not an effective way. It's almost sort of like a legal waiver to have presented something at city council. But it's just, it's not, we need to do a better job at communicating and collaborating out to the residents what's happening. I get, we all get the impression that the city manager, the city council, you know, doesn't want the public to know what's happening because, you know, then they might elect someone else, or they, you know, it might challenge the establishment power, God forbid. And, you know, so actually, on my candidate statement, I specifically talked about how it's important to improve collaboration. So, you know, it's sort of like, I used to be in a lot of plays and musicals in high school and so on, and you really, we were encouraged to play to the back of the balcony. You got to make sure that the people on the back of the balcony can hear you, right? And it's similar here. There are people that do use internet, there are people that don't use internet. There are people, in my messaging for my campaign, I've been using emails and phone numbers for texting and emailing. Some people get that, some people didn't opt into that. Some people come to the farmer's market, some people go to the bars and restaurants. So my specific idea is to have, you know, interactive, large interactive screens on Laurel and in the park that can be multilingual and voice-activated and also touch-activated. And that's just another way that we can try to communicate and collaborate better. I think, and I think to a certain degree, anytime you want to do new development, for example, like with my preschool lease and redevelopment in a sense of the Church of 1550 Alameda, Palos, across from Carmon, we were just about to submit our architecture and conditional use permit to, in that case, actually, the city of Belmont's Planning Department and Planning Commission. And then, you know, the pandemic, you know, kind of destroyed our capacity throughout the business model. But in that case, we would be required already to send postcards to all the residents within a certain number of feet, it's something like, you know, 1,000 feet away. And so they do try to make efforts, and especially at much bigger development, that they'll have several different committee meetings. They will try to reach out and get feedback. But to John's point earlier, it's good that they're getting feedback, but it just seems like then they just, you know, kind of throw it in the trash and move on and do whatever they want. So I think there needs to be more respect for the existing residents of San Carlos. My name is Alexander Kent, I'm ready for San Carlos City Council. Please do vote for me, you can look at my website at alexkent.org. You can email me or call me, 650-793-0541. And I'll be down here at the farmer's market today, trying to look people further. So have a wonderful day.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Durkin, last notes as well. How do you plan to involve community members? You talked about that looking over petitions or bringing that up, or the two-minute system you were talking about. Could you, just closing off, how would you involve the community more?
Right, yeah, so again, thank you both for this, and Carmon for the online presence. And I thank you for this this morning, 9 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday this time. I did say for this, so. But with regard to the housing elements, I'd love city staff, the planning department, get out there and meet your stakeholders. If there's going to be a project at Cherry and Old County Road, Cherry and Industrial, take a pop-up. Go out there at different hours of the day. Industrial and Old County Road, the traffic is different throughout the day. So go out there, meet your stakeholders at the property, and show people the plans for the project, what's going to be, you know, go out, meet the people that are really involved in this, and see the traffic implications of what's going to happen over there. And like I did say, yes, everyone needs to take advantage of the public comment. A lot of these meetings now are so easy, you sit at home and they're on Zoom. It can't be easier to make public comment and to be incorporated and heard in San Carlos by the city council. And then the other would be the checklist that I mentioned. What do the stakeholders want in each project? And the planning department, let's have you incorporate that. The other thing that I would love to see is a database online of just projects, you know, Billy 123. And then people can go to it and see what the different components are to that project, what amenities it's going to have, what impact it'll have, and to see what's happening in those projects. So something online for people to go to. Sometimes I think the city hall or city website, it's difficult to navigate, like, what you're looking for and all of that. But if there's just something where people can go and say, okay, you know, you can go online and see anyone's menu of a restaurant. Why can't we go online and see what a project is and what's the timeline? And again, afterwards, what promises did this developer make to San Carlos? Do we have those trees? Do we have the swimming pool, blah, 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 those kind of things? But what is the, what is coming up as a deadline? And is San Carlos getting what they were promised along the way? John Durkin, San Carlos City Council.
Good luck, John.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you very much, audience. Please contact us if you have any further questions.
Yeah, and thank you guys both, Mr. Durkin, Mr. Kent. And once again, a huge thanks to Clock Tower Music and Mr. Kimmel.
Clock Tower Music.